Good evening. I'd like to call the special meeting of the Campbell City Council on Tuesday, February twenty first, two thousand and twenty-three to order. Could we have roll call, please? Councilmember Lopez.
Here.
Councilmember Scazola.
Here.
Councilmember Frittato.
Here.
Vice Mayor Landry.
Present.
Mayor Bybee.
Present.
So we're here this evening to receive an update on the administrative draft of the multifamily development and design standards, associated updates to the Campbell Municipal Code and refinements to the draft general plan. We will receive a report from staff and council questions, and then we'll be opening it up for public comment. So I'll turn it over to Community Development Director Rob Eastwood.
Good afternoon, good evening, afternoon meeting. Mayor Bybee, honourable councilmembers, members of the audience. We know there's two hours allocated for this. We'll try to make the best use of time. My job tonight is mainly to introduce the staff, set the table for what we're discussing tonight, and the staff and the consultant team will be presenting most of what you see tonight. For the main structure tonight, we were suggesting that council follow the structure on the screen. Quick interview, introduction overview on my part. We do have an initial presentation just to do a broad overview of the standards and how they work, to reintroduce the councils. The first time you are seeing the standards in their totality. We do understand this is a very dense, technical document, and so tonight we just wanted to provide at least the highlights of the document. And after that, we were going to stop, and any or questions from council are welcome on understanding the standards. Believe me, I'm a trained planner, and it still takes me a while to get through them, so we welcome all questions that you're comfortable understanding the standards. After that, we would go into mainly what is here for tonight is we've gone out with our stakeholder engagement with the community developers on the standards, and we've received a substantial amount of feedback. We wanted to bring back to you tonight the high points of that feedback. There are many letters, both in the desk item and attached, the detailed letters we have been submitted, but we've tried to go over the broad thematic points that have been brought up by our stakeholders and the recommended responses by staff. We would then present that, advising at that point, council take public comments, I'm sorry, council ask questions, take public comment and deliberate. And that's the main section of the presentation tonight. The last part, we did want to touch base with you on one or two things. We were, in addition to the objective standards, staff has prepared comprehensive updates to the zoning ordinance. Most of those are to implement the new housing designations in the general plan. There are at least two points we want to go through where there are some structural changes, one is we are recommending a change to the permitting structure for a lot of housing projects right now. Due to the structure of Campbell's ordinance, sometimes the council will see very small projects because PD zoning or not, and we're proposing to change the structure where small, medium, and large projects would go, would be reviewed administratively, planning commissioning council. So we want to present that restructuring of how the permits are issued in Campbell. And two, talk a little bit about what would be called an opt-out process if, for some reason, folks do not want to use the development standards, what that would look like. And finally, quickly, we just caught one or two small cleanup items in the general plan. We just wanted to touch base with you on those before we bring that back to you at the end of March for adoption. So that's generally the structure tonight. The presentation note will be led by the staff, the consultant team. You've of course recognized our planning staff, senior planner Stephen Rose will be leading this discussion, associate planner Tracy Tan is here, and our consultant team Opticus is online. I believe the two members with us tonight are Roger Foreman and Tony Perez are online with us tonight. So with that, I will hand it over to Stephen.
All right, thank you. So just as a starting point for tonight, we wanted to provide a brief overview of how we got to where we are today. Our last touch point with the council had been back last year in November, when the city council provided feedback in key topic areas of the multifamily development design standards, such as the walkable areas and our general approach to adjacency standards, architectural standards. Throughout January, as mentioned earlier by Director Eastwood, we did hold a number of committee meetings as well as developer workshops, as well as listening sessions. So we've been very engaged with the community, trying to get their feedback in the development standards, and trying to refine them in response to that feedback. And tonight, what we have before you is the administrative draft of the form-based, the administrative draft of the multifamily development design standards, as well as a form-based zone map, as well as a summary of some of the comprehensive zoning code updates we're contemplating to carry forward these new standards in development. As just a general reminder, as a study session regarding the final decisions tonight, we're still planning for adoption of all of this in March, but just this is again, is a stopping point, check in where we are at today. So this is a, again, is a broad point. These are some of the key takeaways of what we've heard throughout the development of these standards over the last several months. First and foremost, the council set a number of priorities for us, such as keeping it simple, keeping this update simple, keeping it focused, keeping it engaging, and keeping it moving. We had also heard that there was a desire to allow for a variety of architectural styles that reflect and build on Campbell's eclectic character that had been built organically over time. We also wanted to make sure that we incorporated the thoughtfulness of the area plans, avoid boxy buildings and cookie cutter design, and finally, that we wanted to make sure that the standards ensured compatibility with adjacent properties, particularly avoiding visual intrusion into single-family neighborhoods. So in response, what we've made is a, took two parts, a form-based zone map, which identifies where these new standards will apply within our community, as well as a multifamily development design standards. This is the document itself that contains all the specifics. And I'm going to pass it over to Roger with Opticus, who's our design consultant team, to go over these two materials in greater detail. Go ahead, Roger.
Thanks, Stephen. So I'll start by briefly explaining the form-based zone map. So the goal here was to enable different types of development in the areas of Campbell where they're most appropriate. And in developing the form-based zone map, we were informed by three things primarily. First is the general plan, land use map, which these standards are meant to implement. Second was the area plans, which influence decisions around building heights and active ground floors. And lastly, was the existing built context, which helped us to fine tune the selection of zones. Over on the right, you can see examples of the intended built form for each of the zones, and you can see the spectrum from low intensity to high intensity. And it's important to emphasize that the standards in these zones are all about building form and physical character. For example, the T four Main Street Zone, you can see down at the bottom of the center column, provides for this connected mixed-use streetscape like you see in downtown Campbell. But at the same time, it's the general plan that's actually regulating the density. So these zones are designed to accommodate the densities that the general plan prescribes for each site. So there might be a range of different densities within each of these forms. Next slide. So the form-based zone map also includes an indication of where non-residential ground floors are required. And this is one aspect that was informed by the area plans, Winchester Boulevard, downtown, and East Campbell. And it's also including areas prioritized as pedestrian routes and neighborhood destinations. So near the Hamilton Transit Stop, the light rail, we have more of the active ground floors required, as well as in some of those neighborhood nodes that we examined previously. Regarding the architectural standards, so referring back to what we heard at past council meetings and from the community, we heard a desire to see variety and eclecticism rather than monotony, excessive repetition, or boxy buildings. And the architectural standards are meant to address these considerations and create a more appealing place to walk. The standards were developed in part by reverse engineering projects that had gotten favorable responses, like the Cressley project at the upper left. And on the slide, we can see some examples of of tools that are being applied. And within each of these sets of standards, there are menus of options to choose from. So it's not necessarily going to be the same set of differentiators every time. For example, at the bottom left, you see the differentiation between base, middle, and top. And this is showing the lowest story constituting the base, but it could also be just a material change at the lowest three feet. So there are multiple paths to compliance with these sets of architectural standards. A number of ways to differentiate between adjacent modules that you see a project like Cressley is broken down into, et cetera. So regarding adjacency and compatibility with the adjacent neighborhoods, the goal here is to protect against large buildings looming over low-rise homes. And depending on which zone is adjacent, the building volumes are required to be limited in height and width within a certain distance of the neighboring property. And you can see three examples of how that would play out, depending on what zone is adjacent. So the large site standards are designed to integrate large projects into the surrounding neighborhood, which means connectivity through the neighborhood for people walking and biking, organizing the development according to the adjacent context, and civic space for neighbors to enjoy. So that what you end up was as a genuine neighborhood fabric, as opposed to a superblock project that's forming an obstacle. So the civic space can be supplied through various types of spaces, as you can see here. And this is an important topic for us to discuss because we'll need to strike the right balance between development potential and Campbell's goals for access to quality public space. So we're going to look at two of the ten test fits that we completed for this effort to make sure that standards are doing what we need them to. The city has shared all ten online, so you can review them at your leisure. So test fit number one is at the Graylands Office Park. And we can go ahead and look at that example. So this shows how the adjacency standards are shaping a large building to be more compatible with the adjacent single-family residential. So you can see the 3D view there, in addition to the plan that we have in the test fits document. And this demonstrates how, even with the adjacency standards applied, it's still possible to reach sixty-three dwelling units per acre in a four-story building. And it's actually higher than the site's general plan designation. Next. So what's interesting here is that this site, although it's a lot larger, has a similar density to the previous example at sixty-two dwelling units to the acre, but it has three-story townhouse and five-story wrap portions, in addition to thoroughfares and civic space. The wraps being the apartment surrounding structured parking, as you can see in the image. And the callouts are showing how the civic space on the site is provided through paseos and a small plaza.
So I would say at this point, we'd stop for council questions. One thing I stopped to, I forgot to mention, so this item did come to the planning commission, it did take about three years, three hours, three hours, thank you, three hours, and I mean with the mayor ahead of time, so we suggested some timeframes. I think we're totally on time at this point, but there's some timeframes just to bookend the discussion, but at this, we can come back to that if it's need for the council, just to see if we're on track to meet the two hours. But anyways, at this point, we'd give it over to council for any questions on what you've seen so far.
Great, thank you. Anyone wish to begin with questions?
I have actually one very simple question. At what level do the multifamily standards apply? So how many units? Is it two, three, four? I just want to make sure that it's clear, and if it's actually defined, I look for it in the document myself.
I would more broadly characterize it as it's going to apply to any and all non-single-family properties without a single-family land use designation throughout the city. So it's generally applicable to two or more unit housing developments, but any site that does not have a single-family land use designation, these standards will apply.
Vice Mayor Landry.
Can you define the difference between open space, public space, and civic space?
So the standards do contain a civic space requirement, which would be a publicly available area that could be used with landscape or open space. Not necessarily, it could have a tot lot or some other type of amenity or feature in that area. The open space standards are generally, and I'm getting a little bit of feedback, but as far as the and I could have Roger speak to it as well, but it's for onsite, private, used, open space. So if a development had a like a pool deck area or some type of other recreational area that was available only for its own residents, that would could or possibly fall under the open space definition. I'll offer one of the points which we have been raised by developers and the community viewing the standards is there was some ambiguity between the civic and open space and landscaping requirements, which is something we've identified and we plan on refining further in the next version of the draft.
Sorry, we're sorry. This is great, by the way. It's nice and loud, but feedback. Okay, going back to that. Before, in the past, open space could be any landscape area. We've had this conversation before, in some cities, any level of dirt counts as open space versus what I would think open space is a park or whatever. And then civic space to me sounds like it's all paved from just the word and how it's used. Like in downtown cities, civic space tends to be very paved and that. So I was hoping that this would be more clarified in what we're actually doing, like what you just said, public accessible, pool decks, you know, that kind of stuff. That's it for questions. Oh, wait.
That's our question. Okay. Councilmember Scazola.
Yeah, I just, I also wanted to build upon what Vice Mayor Landry is talking about because we definitely, I think all of us were in agreement that we need more open spaces in general here in Campbell. So we're doing a lot of building, and I would also hope that these spaces would be things that, you know, more of the general public can utilize, and definitely more like you're suggesting, park-type atmospheres.
Okay. Councilmember Lopez, any questions? Okay, I'll go back to staff for the administrative draft report.
Okay, so after releasing the administrative draft, as mentioned earlier, we've had a number of meetings with the public developers, as well as our ad hoc subcommittee, the planning commission, from which we received feedback and worked to refine the standards in response. The whole point of those meetings were to, again, solicit feedback on the standards and identify changes were appropriate. And although we have a number of refinements still outstanding and planned, we, as staff, we're planning on having additional stakeholder meetings the week of February twenty-seventh, where we'll continue to refine those areas identified in the report that are still outstanding, like the definition, definitional clarity on, say, civic versus open space. That's a good example, something which we're working on refining, and we'll get additional feedback on through these upcoming stakeholder meetings. So what I want to walk you through is through these individual aspects of the multifamily development design standards, as well as the form-based map, we have received feedback. And then in response to the report, we've identified our intended approach. This is really serving as guideposts, as it stands right now in our update process, where and the direction we're going to be taking the standards in response and kind of the structure of what we're planning on discussing in greater detail during the stakeholder meetings that are up and coming. So the first comment which we'd received was actually on the form-based map itself. There was considerations about where and how we're applying the zones to individual properties in the community. For example, if the Fize Electronics Site, as well as the Prune Yard, had been applied to lower form-based zone, which wouldn't have allowed for as tall or as large a buildings as what the standards could provide for. In response, a number of such properties were, have been changed, allowing buildings up to seventy-five feet, which is the city maximum citywide height limit. And we also are considering allowing, removing the story limit for taller buildings, those which would be over three stories, allowing the height of those buildings be governed by a maximum limit, like forty-five feet, sixty feet, without getting into specifics of the number of stories that could occur within that area. In regard to the commercial ground floor requirement, from the public, we've broadly heard a lot of interest in providing for walkable areas and the areas which we've indicated on the map. However, the development committees express interest to either reduce or eliminate the requirement, expressing concerns with feasibility and the development cost of constructing such areas or spaces. In response, staff is intending on retaining the yellow line and even in actually also adding an area which we've identified in the staff report within the Santa Moss Area Neighborhood Plan. There's two commercial properties, including the Milk Farm Dairy Site, which would be added to that. But also, in response to the idea of potentially reducing or providing greater flexibility to these standards, we're considering providing for alternative compliance options for smaller properties. Those sites which aren't really wide enough or deep enough to support a ground floor commercial component could evaluate all other options of providing kind of that same type of pedestrian, active ground floor environment, such as through rest areas or public art pieces. And again, as previously mentioned, we are planning the week of the twenty-seventh to have ongoing conversations about these standards, getting at the depth and the height of the spaces required. And we're going to be meeting with stakeholders on this and to refine those details in greater detail and where they're applied. In regard to large site standards, general feedback, so this is the, we were speaking earlier about the civic space requirement and those areas which we make publicly available for sites which are greater than five acres. So within the standards today, there's a requirement for ten percent of the site to be publicly available. The idea behind that would be towards the public right-of-way. So members, the public could access those areas and share in the use of those amenities which are provided. Feedback from the development community is that the ten percent requirement is a little bit too high. They'd like to see that number reduced to such as five percent. And they've expressed challenges or difficulty with obtaining insurance for these areas. They've expressed a general concern that it might be difficult to obtain. In response, staff is still recommending retaining and even the planning commission as well, retaining the civic space required, that ten percent requirements, we're recommending holding firm on that. Just noting that right now, the city requires between eight to twenty percent of a site to be landscaped. This is eight percent would be like an industrial property, twenty percent would be our higher-density residential sites. And just noting that civic space, it could either be privately held and insured, or in the event that developer wants to release it, they could consider providing a dedication to the city of that area. The city could take it on as well as its maintenance obligations potentially. In regard to building types, just broad feedback on a desire to allow larger and taller buildings from development community, which is not, you know, unexpected. Also desire to allow multiple curb cuts on the street and flipping the face of building access, which I'll explain a little bit in greater detail here on the screen. So the standards presently require that buildings would be designed in a manner that the front door is on a side, which is really opposite of the garage entry. The feedback which we've been hearing is that a lot of buildings in the city have been built with this type of style in mind that you see here on the left, where the front door is adjacent to the garage. The standards actually kind of flip that approach. They require you to have a separated front side of a building, so two units might face one another and be served by a rear axis alley, where it's more akin to like this Kennedy, this Kennedy project that you see here on the right. So in response to both of these comments, staff is saying that rather than changing and tweaking the standards in all these zones where you hear about it, where you're saying allow for taller, three-story tall buildings, or changing the height of them, we should really be focusing on changing where we're applying certain form-based zones to the map itself, because these form-based zones, they provide for the whole gamut of building types and stories and building and number of connected units and townhomes or apartment buildings. So if we apply the right map, the right zone to the right site, the standards within any given zone should accommodate what the council's direction should want to be, as opposed to changing them across the board to a particular zone to say, all buildings in this zone, or the smaller zone, should allow for a taller building or a bigger, larger building. And then again, on the curb cuts and access, staff is not recommending a change of that, finding that the example you're seeing here on the right is a preferable way of laying out a project or site. So in regard to the architectural standards, so Roger touched on this briefly, but I might expand a little bit. So our approach was, again, we weren't trying to prescribe a particular architectural style. We weren't saying buildings in Campbell now need to be craftsmen, or Spanish, or Victorian. Instead, what we took was a set of standards that, that kind of, again, modeled after like a project like this Cressley example, you see here in the bottom right. What we identified was successful and what was working with that project was it's broken up into individual, smaller components, even though it was a larger building. And as a result of modulating that building, is the key word that we're using here, you kind of get this eclecticism, you get that kind of organic building design and feel, which we think that is what we're aiming for. Developers felt as if the requirement to break up a building by having distinct sections with distinct window types, distinct materials applied to the elevation, distinct colors or paint, that does add project cost. And as a result, developers had expressed concern and a desire to reduce, or potentially also, again, eliminate this requirement, which is again, is trying to achieve that kind of eclecticism, especially in our higher-density residential projects in the city. So again, staff notes that the intent of this is to achieve that eclectic and sufficiently varied appearance, which we've heard has been desired from the council. But we still do intend on meeting again later this month to identify high-impact, low-cost approaches, which could also serve the same, so we kind of get the most impact for the least cost. And also making potential adjustments to the menu of options which are available, how you go about sufficiently varying one segment of a building to another, and the extent to which it's required. So we might be a little bit more lenient, where, say, the building's abutting an interior side, or it's less publicly visible, or you're abutting a highway or something on the back. Maybe on those sides of the building, we're less stringent on applying these types of architectural standards. In terms of compatibility, again, similar feedback, it does add costs, it could potentially reduce the size of buildings or units. Staff, again, we're indicating that these were intended to limit off-site impacts. Again, the example you're seeing here in the bottom left is what we're trying to avoid. And what these standards do is they kind of require a building to either step down or be broken to smaller components as you approach a property line, which is context-specific. So the amount, how big a building and how tall it is, changes depending on what you're adjacent to in the standards. Now, we had gone maybe a little bit further in our approach, because we didn't stop at, say, single-family, we made it so it scaled the full gamut up. So it includes townhomes, or duats, or three or four-story buildings. The standards change in those adjacencies. And as a result, these standards are, they apply in more contexts than we maybe had originally contemplated. Again, our intention later this month is to meet to discuss the application of these adjacency standards, going into a little bit greater detail on how they are applied on narrow lots, as well as in areas based on not their existing context. So the standards were applied in such a way that if a building is two stories or one story existing, they might have been applied to lower if a building is two stories or one story existing, they might have been applied to lower zone on their on a lower form-based zone on their property versus what it could potentially be in the future under the land use map. So we, if the city calls for a high-density residential land use designation, but there happens to be an existing single-story, single-family home that's built on that property, these standards were applied in such a way that that single-story, single-family home uh would be treated more sensitively than what that site might be twenty, thirty, fifty years from now. So we're looking at providing that uh maybe turning turning the knob a little bit to take into account um what it could be in the future. And and then finally, on 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 these standards, the planning commission provides a number uh feedback as well. Uh again, just a broad takeaway is just to continue to work with developers in areas of concern, uh also to make refinements to the materials as follows. On the form-based map, they've expressed an interest to allowing up to seventy-five feet in the T-five area, where it's presently limited sixty-eight feet, as well as removing the story limit for taller buildings uh in terms of the commercial ground floor requirements. Uh uh they were supportive of the areas which which were identified in the map and as well as providing for additional compliance options for those smaller lots or where it's a little bit more difficult to provide a ground floor commercial component. In terms of the civic and open space uh requirement, the ten percent, they were interested in retaining, but again, clarifying the relationship between the civic and open space standards. Access, again, sta- staff is recommending they're also encouraging limiting the number of curb cuts and consulting driveways on site, not providing those direct uh driveways onto a public street. In terms of the compatibility adjacency standards, they were the 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 planning mission is largely the emphasis uh were providing us emphasis on the land use map as opposed to existing conditions, to say, what what is that site going to look like when it does redevelop as opposed to as it exists today? And again, um planning issues is a broad takeaway, they were also telling us or suggesting that rather than us trying to uh get every single standard dialed in just as we want it, that we do focus on uh providing opportunities in the future to refine the standards, returning back uh as necessary to, and we in a staff, we absolutely agree with that. And we do plan on providing an update the first year following the adoption of standards. Uh and on the last point on this is that we did receive a desk item. Uh it did include four emails. Uh first had been an email from uh Rajah Paye, which had requested a change in the form-based zone applied to three properties in the Santa Moss area. Uh also expressing concerns with feasibility and the height uh applied in to properties in that area and a desire to broadly align the standards that were that are under development with the more permissive standards that would be afforded to a site that's subject to SB nine or ADU standards. Uh the comment from Brett, uh unfortunately, it looks like he got cut off on the side. Uh I'll have to revisit that. Um and then we had an additional comment from the Polty Group, which was the same as was included in the packet. So it was the same letter that they had addressed the planning commission, but just now flipped to the council. And then finally, uh Valio Partners had requested uh tweaks. And these are the individual standards, we're not recommending getting into this level of detail at tonight's meeting, but these are kind of the areas which we'll be working to refine as part of that upcoming meeting later this month. But they're suggesting that we reduce the design site width to sixteen feet to allow for like tandem townhome designs and the depth of the of 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 townhome sites, as well as reducing our parking requirements um of the setback required. So with that, we have a a stopping point, which will provide opportunity for public comment on the standards themselves, as well as council questions before we uh adjourn to the code updates or we move on to the code update section.
Sure, can I add one thing? So as mentioned, we've tried to do the high points, a lot of the comments and feedback are very, very detailed. Um and if the council would like to weigh in on those, we we more than like welcome the feedback. Um one area to think about would be more of, as staff has mentioned, we're going to have a second round of meetings with the developers. Intent is to meet somewhere in the middle here, where um we're having standards that protect the city's image and what buildings should look like, but allow enough flexibility where there's not in feasibility issues. Um something helpful that the council might consider is, as you look at these topic areas uh to give feedback to staff on a priority of what is at utmost importance. It's almost a delegation to staff to negotiate on these. But say, for example, on the adjacency standards is the feedback from council that these are, as we've heard before, very important, um that we should not be looking at loosening any adjacency standards, and that's of high importance. Or is there a direction that in some areas, some of the adjacency standards the city should look at a bit more loosely? So it might help the council, rather than having to worry about going into a ten versus a fifteen-foot standard to prioritize prioritize areas that have our importance of council and looking at building design.
Great, thank you, Director Iskut for that help helpful focus. Um so we'll I'll open it up for questions of the council. Um Councilmember Lopez, we'll start with you.
Sure, thank you. Um very, very good, helpful presentation. Um I've got three questions and uh maybe helpful to go back to the slides as I reference them, starting with the building type slide, if you go there, please. Um so you you briefly mentioned the 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 um current option with no change to curb cuts is preferable, the the one on the right, I believe, compared to the the one on the left. Could you just elaborate more on why that's a preferable design?
So the 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 primary example you're seeing here on the screen is if 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 you had a townhome development that had direct access on the public right-of-way, you'd be introducing a number of curb cuts into that right-of-way, which has disrupted the traffic patterns. Also, it's almost counterintuitive, because in order to provide for or counterproductive, I should say, because once you're providing those curb cuts, you might be reducing onsite parking in order to provide for private or offsite parking, in order to provide for private onsite parking. So you're removing a whole run of public parking spaces and introducing that, again, that additional uh traffic disruption. Now, on within a project site, you would have an orientation, almost like what you see uh near City Hall here, Ainsley Square, has orientation of front doors to front doors to create more of a a neighborhood look and feel of a community, as opposed to a bunch of garage doors facing each other, and that's the way that neighbors uh interact with one another. And you're kind of seeing this type of uh design aesthetic and and the difference between that the approach on screen. Now, one counterpoint I'll provide, although um is that the the reason, a a reason why the example on the left is often preferred is it does provide for backyard space for such units, because they're providing all of their access needs, the pedestrian, the front door and the garage all on one side, and the backside would then be a larger backyard. But that's that that is a distinctive trade-off.
Thank you, that's really helpful. Um could you go to the next one, please? Do you have an estimate of the even just very approximately of the increase to cost of having the the approach that we're taking here as as opposed to what developers are requesting?
I would say it's challenging to put a price estimate on it, because the example on the left is undefined. So you could have a singular building wall with the same application of the same stucco window assembly type, door assembly type across an entire facade. I will broadly say there are efficiencies in buying one type of window and installing the exact same window over and over and over again. You can reduce those costs by allowing larger segments of the building to use the exact same window, door, facade, assembly type. You also might be introducing more trades if a portion of the building needed to involve, say, masonry or brick versus a stucco type approach, I I could see if we could get an estimate um a- as we start to refine these. Right now, we're still at the conceptual stages.
I I'll come back to this, but I that would be helpful to me, especially as you have the these roundtables and and discussions. I I appreciate that. Um and if if you could just go to the planning uh commission feedback, finally. Uh the the last point here, what kind of flexibility do we have um to refine this in in the future if there are updates that we want to make? And and what, and I I guess let me add to that, what what flexibility do we have and what would be preferable from a process and staff and just good practices standpoint?
So I'll offer two things. The first is it it is definitely difficult to impose additional standards on projects um in the future. So it's a kind of like a one-way street. If you allow a certain height, it is increasingly difficult under SB three thirty to say, now we're going to reduce that height, we didn't like the outcome, we now want it to be, say, forty-five feet and sub seventy-five. That does present a cha- a challenge. Um as far as us revisiting the standards, I anticipate within the first several months of their adoption, to be frank, we're going to be receiving a number of projects. And and through that receipt and review, we're going to be learning an incredible amount of information about what aspects of these standards are resulting in what outcomes. And we plan to take the lessons learned from that that and continue to continue to refine and tweak these standards over time and come back to the council with with revisions accordingly.
Great, all really helpful, that's all my questions for now, thank you.
Councilmember Scazzola?
Uh yeah, so obviously, I wasn't on the previous council to make certain comments, but I am very happy to see some of these uh visual examples, especially, you know, like what we don't want, which I think the best example is the large looming building over an already established neighborhood, like, you know, I am a hundred percent, yes, we do not want that community, same for the cookie cutter type stuff. So I'm understanding the developers are saying, oh, it's going to cost us more, you know, to make it not so cookie cutter, but I mean, I'm sorry, not sorry. Like, I know that nobody in the community wants cookie cutter type uh buildings here. So that's all I have to say at the moment.
Okay, questions, Councilmember Rottato?
Thank you. So I wanted to refer back to a couple of things that you said in the earlier questioning period. Um first of all, when we talked about multifamily standards of two or more, then does that, how does that relate to SB nine, which um allows for, you know, on a given piece of property, you can have two units. Uh if someone wants to build another unit, do they become subject to the multifamily dwelling rules?
Yeah, I'll clarify this, SB nine process is a distinct process. So we, within the multifamily development design standards, we are going to be providing very limited exceptions. Uh projects with accessory dwelling units, junior accessory dwelling units, and projects subject to our two-lot subdivision standards, which is the SB nine provisions, will not be subject to these standards upon adoption.
Okay, and then um likewise to Councilmember Landry's uh quest, two questions. Uh when you were giving the definition of civic space and open space, I can see how that can be confusing. Um I can see that the term civic space, I I think of it more government space, but I mean, it is open space. I understand that publicly available. But the term open space is just a common term that everybody uses talking about open space. And if you try to narrow that officially to a definition that says onsite private open space, it seems to be restricting it so much that no one will really understand that concept. I mean, I I just think it's there should be a different term. Um because open space, everybody talks about open space everywhere, and it's not just private space. I I hate to be so picky about this, but I think if we don't define these things when we're writing the documents, it it's going to lead to problems later on.
Look at the definitions better, I I think of it as three tiers, and I'll see if I'm getting this off. So in our standards today, we require private open space. If you had a condo, that would be a balcony or a townhome in your backyard. Then there's the private shared open space, and you see those in units where there's a shared uh pool deck or something like this. The new standard, which is new standard, it is called civic, but I'd say it's publicly accessible open space, where it's privately owned by the developer, but the public can access it, say, like a Santana Row. So we can look at the definitions, but if you, but those tiers would be the the three areas that we're looking at.
Vice Mayor Landry?
Um I'm not sure of the question.
Okay.
We're going to get to go through.
Yes, yes. And I I have one question um related to the building types. Could you bring that slide back up, Stephen? I'm still trying to understand um what it means by focus on zones versus standards. And and if I maybe um, I'm looking at the example on the left, and that reminds me of the development on um by the Creek Trail. Um I I forget the name of it. Where there the the units have a common driveway and the garage is behind and the access to the uh the front door is actually uh on the face of the Creek Trail. And the other units are on the opposite side of 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 the garage, if that makes sense. The picture on the right is ob- obviously very different. It's the the front, the doors are on the front, the the front doors are in the front. So how do, how does that um? If you have a development with your, where you're recommending the doors on the front, how does that then be compatible with what we have already established in in that area? Are you, are you familiar with the one I'm talking about?
Uh I am, so it was the uh Mozart, Mozart, no, I'm sorry, it's the, yeah, the Dylan Samcaba project with uh Whips and Homes that built it. Um yeah, I mean, that project actually varies. So you do have an example, some units which face one another, you have the units which face the Creek Trail, and you have some units which face an interior driveway with with a uh the garage access, like what you're seeing here on the screen on the left. So it is a good example. So it is, it is a question of whether or not we want to continue that pattern of development on a going-forward basis, or if we would prefer to see more examples like the Ainsley Square development, where units face one another. So the question of compatibility, for me, it's more of a question of is this the type of development pattern we wish to continue to pr- to build and promote in the community? Or do we prefer uh the 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 approach which is being recommended? Um in terms of the second question, or I guess you'd say the first question you'd asked about what is meant by the focus on the zones versus the focusing on the on changing the standards? I'll take us back to the the overall form-based zone map. So we will have a zones that allows for, say, a two-and-a-half-story tall building. So what we're receiving in terms of feedback from the community is, I don't like the two-and-a-half-story zone applied to my property, I want to build a three-story tall building. The comment which we're providing in response is, well, there is a zone, say, this next one up over here, which allows for a three-story tall building. So rather than amending the 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 standards which are applied within the zone, change which zones are applied to the property on a site-specific basis. So as opposed to, because we we have tried to apply these in appropriate contexts, like the two-and-a-half stories does apply in our, say, our Santa Moss area, where we're trying to carry forward the the thoughtfulness of the area plan, which had limited the height of stories in those areas. But if we feel as if that's an inappropriate standard apply, we'll just pick the next zone up.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, Councilmember?
Well, what is a two-and-a-half-story building?
So there's a fair amount of commentary on that in the preceding meetings as well. Um it it it's a good example, going back to that um that one we had over here on building types, I'll just jump there real quick. So this is a two-and-a-half-story tall, two-and-a-half-story building, these um ones you see in the bottom right, even though they appear three stories. These are true three stories or even three and a half, depending on how you look at this kind of like uh top, top element here. The the Kennedy projects is forty-five to eighty-one Kennedy, it's just north of the Saint Lucy Schools. This is actually a local Campbell example. Um what you're seeing is the uppermost floor has is limited on the amount of extent that its exterior wall can protrude or extend. And that kind of creates this kind of a a a habitable, but limited habitable area on the uppermost floor of the building. So you don't get to extend the building all the way flush, like what you're seeing here on the on the left, all the way up to the face of the building. You would have to limit um the extent to which that is applied. Now, in terms of developable area, these units are characterized, they've got a ground floor bedroom, the second floor, they've got a living room and a kitchen, and that upper floor, they've got two more bedrooms. So you get generally a three, three-bedroom unit out of a lot of these two-and-a-half-story development projects.
Okay, any other questions? Councilmember Scazzola?
Uh just quickly going back to the kind of open space, civic space thing. Um there was a comment or mentioning of uh developers having trouble maybe with insurance or some of that. And then you you quoted, there is possibly something where the city can, what what would that entail? Like, are we talking about maintenance? We'd have to uh use city resources to maintain that? And what about like liability issue?
Yeah, I mean, the the particular details of any dedication would be evaluated with the project and that dedication, whether or not the city were to receive it. There is a provision in our code that deals with land dedication and public park dedication to jurisdiction. I I believe generally the standards require a larger space um to be provided in most contexts in order to make it meaningful enough to have uh maintenance provided. But the city does have very small parks like Gomez Park, uh which is a small little area and is locally maintained. As far as, and that that this is an idea just to kind of get around to, if if there's a concern with providing As far as, and that this is an idea just to kind of get around it, if there's a concern with providing insurance, now granted, this would only be applied to sites that are five acres in size or larger. And and is as such, we think it's a reasonable provision.
Thank you.
Okay, if there are no further questions, the council, I'll open the public comment. And we'll allow two minutes and would open it up to first the audience in the council chamber, if you'd like to come up and speak, if you could identify yourself and.
Check. Okay, yeah, it was not on. Raja Palila, one, two, one, six West Hessian Avenue. I truly request the council to make this five minutes for public comments. There are barely three people here. It's a wide topic across the city. I know you have the discretionary power, so I I honestly request to do that. It's not an easy topic. It's a one eighty page document. You know, I honestly have to disagree with staff comments on the comment regarding ensuring farm based zones are mapped where appropriate. That makes it discretionary and not objective. State clearly mentions that the goal of objective standards is to eliminate the guesswork before we actually go and submit the stuff. So this actually is like, oh, can I now go and request for a different farm zone kind of a thing? The other thing is the two point five floors, if you can go to that slide. I know we are talking about curb cuts and things, but what if it is not actually a main road, like if it is like a private driveway? Imagine this this side of the left side of the buildings, two of them facing one to one each other onto a private driveway or something, right? That's not a curb cut, but it's directly into the, so that is what will make it feasible. So these are housing for the missing middle. We don't have a lot of properties addressed in this whole housing element thing for the missing middle, the people with families, kids, parents living with them and things like that. Most of these objective standards are designed in such a way to allow only for people living in a studio, one bedroom or a two bedroom, like seven hundred fifty square feet, four fifty square feet or something. But if you look at the San Thomas properties, which are designated for these kinds of things, you know, people in that area prefer to come like townhomes or small lot homes than you know, like an apartment complex or something like that with ten units of two bedrooms with parking downstairs or something like that. Also for a point five floors, to add a point five floor.
If you can wrap up, Rajah. We have people online that want to speak as well, and the council does have a significant amount of.
Sure, I will quickly do it. For to add a point five floor adds cost in terms of at least a six digit cost. Instead of if it becomes half floor instead of a full floor, in terms of load bearing walls, engineering costs, foundations and all that stuff, right? This is significant money, which will only make the property infeasible. Please look at the packets, look at all all those developers, architects who tried to support towards the missing middle townhomes and stuff. All of them are saying that these restrictions will make it infeasible to build these kind of housings, right? Please don't think that you are directly coming onto the road, think that you have an alley and the townhomes are facing each other. Yeah, I have a lot more, but unfortunately, I guess.
Thank you. And we also received your email with your comments too. So we do have record of that. Mr. Sullivan?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, James Sullivan. First, really quickly want to commend Rob and the City of Campbell for the for the stakeholder meetings that they've had. I attended both the community meeting as well as the developer meeting. Two of the letters that you received are people that I'm representing, Pulte Homes and Valley Oak Partners. Their letters kind of go into greater detail. I do just want to touch on two, and I'm happy to hear from Rob that on February twenty seventh that week, there will be further information that we can we can have. The units per building, I think that was in the Pulte letter, per the T four medium standards is limited to six units. Pulte is requesting an extension of that. And I just want to state that in both the Virginia Avenue property as well as the Llewellyn property, both of the developers are trying to come up with really exciting product type. And architecturally, I mean, you know, stunning type things. Getting to the density that the city wants us to get to is difficult without, you know, having an increased amount of of building or even on Valley Oak Partners saying, you know, take down the minimum width from eighteen feet to sixteen feet. Just uncertain of the units that would have tandem will help us achieve that minimum density that we want to try and get to and provide, you know, the missing middle that Raj was talking about, three and four bedroom town townhome units that the City of Campbell also needs. Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Thank you. Next.
Sorry, I'm a little short. My name is Sarah Cheff, and thank you very much for having me here and welcome to the new council members. And congratulations. I'm representing my family, basically, which has a parcel of two oh seven seven and two oh eight nine South Bascom. I actually have a map right here. I'm not sure if you guys will be able to pull it up on Google Maps, but it's a parcel which essentially we'd like to develop for teacher housing or affordable workforce housing. We're long term community members. Unfortunately, it's an odd shaped parcel. But it's in an area that was identified by the previous council where we want to have high density housing. So it's on the corner of Bascom and Campbell Avenue. But behind it is a, on the map, it's coded in such a way that the adjacency standards would make it almost undevelopable. That's on Michael Drive, which is an area of all high density apartment buildings. So I'm asking the council if they could please look at that one area and see if they could do something about the coding and the zone so that we could, you know, make a better project there. And I'm hoping Director Eastwood and Mr. Rose have talked about meeting next week. So I'm hopeful they've been wonderful that we can work this out. But I did want to see, I don't know if you can, if it's possible to pull this up, map up so that the council could see it. Just because I think it's a good example, a real life example of how adjacency standards can impact a project if it's kind of skinny or you have an odd an odd shape. So I don't know if I'll have a second to just show you the map if that's possible.
Can you just, can you hand the map to Steve who can hand it up to us?
Sure. And what's also interesting is, even though I don't represent represent the owners of that parcel where the gas station is on the corner of Bascom and Campbell Avenue, they would also be affected. Okay. Oh, I was going to say, they would also be affected. So that's where the council had said they wanted to build high density housing because of the coding of the MAC behind it, there's a duplex behind it, which is an investment property. It's that zone right there. It would limit the development size on on those blue parcels on the corners, that corner of Bascom and Campbell Avenue. And if you actually take a peek at that map, I'll leave it with you. You can, the picture shows, you know, the map that I've presented, that that is an area I'm sure the council is familiar with. It's all apartments. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your time and consideration. Steve, you want an opportunity? Okay. Could we go online? It looks like we have a couple of people with hands raised.
Scott Reese?
Hi, good evening, Scott Reese, three thirty Harrison Avenue. I just want to commend you guys for an amazing job that you're doing. I just had one question and one maybe thing to clarify. When you look at your map, not your map, I'm sorry, the building types, you're actually looking at a townhouse and a single family residence. So I just want to point that out that the single family residents on the right hand side, because they're not touching, that's how it, that's how it's classified. And where this really comes into play is with the townhouses. If there's ever a future sale or one of them needs work, you're going to have to do a lot of agreements between people. If you have to do termites or tenting or anything like that. So I just want to make sure that you guys are comparing apples to apples when you're looking at that building types that was presented to you earlier. Single family residences are obviously a lot easier to sell than it or have work done than a than a townhouse. My only question is, do any of the design standards being recommended hurt the city's ability to meet our housing goal? That's the only question that I have. And that's not something that can be answered, but I just maybe keep that in mind that, you know, I know we're trying to meet the housing goal. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Scott. Next. Next, we have Matt Weber.
Good evening, council. I'm Matt Weber here, Ellis Partners, and calling regarding our property at Prun Yard. Wanted to thank Rob and the whole city team consultant for putting together a very robust set of standards. And I wanted to support staff's recommendation, including the recommendation to to meet regarding some of these standards. One example, the architectural standards which have been discussed tonight. It's not about cost. It's really about making sure that these are buildable. For instance, the standard currently requires eight different types of variety, including one option, which would be a six foot deep balcony or eight foot height difference between one module of a building and another. And you need a different module every sixty feet. So you can imagine the variety that you would have there would be a pretty haphazard building. And I think a lot of the objectives can be met with getting together with with the design team at the city. Just talking through, maybe it should be three feet. Maybe a balcony could be five feet instead of six feet. Lots of other creative solutions here that will lead to good design. And then the last thing that I'll mention is there's a whole section that's called parking setbacks. And this is a pretty confusing topic when you think about a typology like a townhome or a typology like a podium building where you have parking on the ground floor or surrounded by units. And so we're requesting that the parking setback be also an item that's discussed as part of this developer forum next week. Thank you very much and look forward to continuing the vibrancy that we have out at Prun Yard.
Thank you, Matt. Next.
Good evening, Mayor Bybee and council. My name is Brett Fierstein, and I represent the Fry's property. I strongly echo the appreciation to Rob, Stephen, Opticos, and all the staff. We cannot thank everyone enough for making their time and meeting with us and open to discussing all these details. I know that together we will make smart and beautiful projects for the city. We really appreciate next week's meeting to work through all these items. And, you know, we've done many of these. And it's just really refreshing to work with a city that understands both sides and how to actually get something done. So we cannot thank everyone enough, looking forward to working together for many years to come.
Brett? I don't see anyone else with hands raised. So at this point, I'll close the public comment portion of the meeting. And I'll bring it back to council for their, our feedback on the administrative draft. And I'll start with Councilmember Lopez.
Sure. Really exemplary work by staff here with with a huge amount of work with a very ambitious and limited timeframe. My, my, the, my overall feedback is just that, you know, let's continue that that good work. I think this is generally in the right direction. But I do think that the upcoming stakeholder meetings will be really important. So let's continue the nuance that we've had in in updating and tweaking what we have to get to the right balance. So really hope we can keep an open mind as as we have those discussions, because I think everyone that we heard from wants, cares about the community and wants to build great projects that are that are going to succeed in and meet our goals. I do have some concerns here and there. We we don't need to go, you know, as we said into every little detail, but about the impacts that some of these standards would have on specific projects, and we want to avoid that as much as possible. Because by by law, we are not allowed of, of course, as we all know, it's a limit the the amount of housing that that we're we're trying to build. That that's not our objective here. It's just to make sure that the projects that are built have are meeting the needs of the community. So I I'm just going to go briefly down. I appreciate the the way the feedback was the the comments and the staff changes being considered was broken up pretty thoughtfully. So I'll I'll just follow that. On the taller buildings, absolutely support the staff response, makes a lot of sense. On commercial ground floor, I am supportive of the staff response, but I really wanted us to think about greater flexibility here, if we're hearing that that this would not be feasible for for some projects. Large sites, this is one where I was, I I've been really supportive of the idea of having some type of public space. I think it's going to be positive as we consider these projects, but I really want to be thoughtful in listening to the feedback that we're we're hearing about the the difficulties and cost implications and some of these things. So I'm personally okay with a little more flexibility in the percentage, perhaps matching the eight to twenty percent that we do in landscaping for for other projects. Could make sense at at a minimum to go to eight. And and maybe even considering if actually having the space could present challenges such as insurance or other things. Maybe there's, there's a fund that is paid into in lieu of some of these spaces if it's not feasible. But just trying to strike the right balance of flexibility with with having great projects. The the building types that this is going to be, I really appreciate Stephen, your answers to my question, and then the answers to Mayor Bybee's comments that that really clarified the discussion here. And and this is where I'm actually probably going to have the strongest disagreement based off what I've heard and that the concrete trade offs here from what what the current staff response is. It, I think it's helpful to think about it in terms of the different examples of of projects that were brought up. And my concern with, I I understand the 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 trade offs and why the staff recommendation right now is what it is. But but I do have a concern that the design that we saw on on the right, while it can be appealing from a a street perspective, if you're walking by, it can create very appealing projects. For residents, I've I've noticed just walking through a lot of these different types of projects. Sometimes that approach on the on the interior of the project can create the these kind of dead zones where where the the garages are all facing each other. It's really a space built for cars, not for for people and getting in and out. So it it becomes less safe for for children to play, for example. Not in Campbell, but in in other cities, I've I've heard of accidents happening in these types of spaces. And it's not necessarily a space where residents on the garage side can can get out to to talk with with one another. So what what I think would be positive is just like in the example of the Dylan and Samkaba example that that was brought up, great, great example, in which I know one of our commenters refer to this as well. I I think allowing that kind of flexibility makes sense, as I think our commenter said. You might want to have different standards for what what is facing the street versus what's going to be private space for for residents. And I think that example is a, and Stephen, the way you broke down the the different types of, you know, the the mixture of styles could could make, could be a good example of what allowing flexibility could could allow for for these types of projects. So I really want to consider that again, thinking about what's going to maximize livability and that kind of neighborhood feeling, which I think is where staff is coming from, but just presenting those additional considerations. And in terms of the the architectural considerations, generally supportive of the staff responses. But but I do think it's really important to increase the flexibility. And I know this is, thank you, this is some of what's going to come out of next week's discussions. But we heard in some of the the comment letters that we received that potentially being too restrictive here with with the approach on the right could create projects that are disjointed or less aesthetically. could create projects that are disjointed or less aesthetically appealing, which is not our intention here. So perhaps in Stephen, in keeping with with some of your comments, for example, about the windows. I I could see a couple, some potential solutions to this being increasing, as you mentioned, the 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 size of the different sections or potentially for for some cost savings with materials, allowing some of that to repeat, just not in sections next to one another. So we still have that eclectic feeling, but for the overall project, there's at least some cost savings with with material and and types. And and I'm sure other suggestions for flexibility will will come up in in those meetings. The the compatibility, I I think, is something that's really important to the the community. So it's I do think the the this is going to be, I I support the staff responses in terms of think thinking about the future. But as as we're going through with with our housing element and and, you know, we we continue growth. I I think that this is going to be something that that's really important. We we have a community that I think is really thoughtful and and supportive of welcoming new neighbors. And and we just want to make sure that that that's done in the right way. That said, as as we heard from some of our commenters, some of this may not make as much sense for smaller lots or smaller projects. And so there may be a minimum threshold where that that sets off that this requirement. So I'm I'm open to more flexibility there for those types of projects. Because again, the intent here is not to make some types of projects infeasible. So just having that 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 floor at which this becomes this requirement becomes activated and might might make sense here. And and then before my last piece of, I just have a quick question. Could you remind me of the the benefit of having the the point five floor? I appreciate the clarification on on what that looks like, but what what is the thinking there?
So that is compared, if you're looking at these two examples, again, you have here on the screen. I do understand this is a detached single family product that you have more than imposing front facade that looks less like if you had an adjacent or nearby single family or two story, single story or two story housing development, that this better blends into those types of contexts. Now, this is actually a very tall example, the two and a half story. So it actually looks very comparable. This is a 35 foot tall example. And and what we're what we're calling for in this lower context is 28 feet in some cases. So you would even it would even look less imposing than the example here on screen.
Thank you. That that's helpful. I'm not personally convinced that the the benefit gained is worth the trade offs in costs for for the amount of living space. It's it's mostly aesthetic consideration. So I I understand. I'm I'm not sure that's the best use here of where our focus should be, given what it could be in terms of increased cost. But generally, really strongly support the staff recommendations and the entire process, which I think has been exemplary. So very much appreciate all the work here.
Councilmember Fertado.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, well, of course, this is an extremely complex subject, a complex document. Couple of general observations that I'd like to mention is, I think a document like this to the level of detail that it exists works well if you are a large developer. You have a big staff, you have financial resources. This is your primary business, and you can get into the weeds of these things and and the details, and they're very helpful as you're planning. Where I think it may present a problem is for very small developers where you only want to develop a few units, but you want to kind of create the level of affordability or make some or all of them affordable. I think that it becomes very prescriptive, very detailed. There seems to lack some flexibility for minor exceptions. I've never felt that you can make a rule or a law that covers every single aspect, that there has to be a human being involved somewhere that can make exceptions without a huge bureaucratic process. And and I hope we would keep that in mind. And I might call everyone's attention to packet page 21, where there are some comments from the Planning Commission. And some of the planning commissioners said the same thing there. They said, the stated architectural standards should be more flexible to ensure development feasibility while also providing eclectic design, particularly in higher intensity areas. One commissioner opined that the standards should emphasize unit production over appearance. Generally stated, changes in building can be costly to someone, and I think this can be true, too. Some of our requirements may sound somewhat costly to someone who's a very small developer. So I think we should kind of keep that in mind as we're kind of going through this. We may not have a lot of real small developers, but but I think, you know, we may have to sort of allow that flexibility, because if you become too complex and too prescriptive, then actually, I think it adds to costs. And it actually discourages affordability, which is what we're trying to achieve in in many respects. So that is my concern. I also wanted to refer to packet page 16, where there's a discussion here now about, at the very bottom, the last few lines, they're talking about the Santa Moss area as an example, where it says there are grounded for commercial area will be required. And sometimes I think we ought to look at the words prescriptive or required and permissive. And maybe we should use a little more permissive and not so prescriptive in in our comments. So it goes on to mention that because of the area, Santa Moss, it says it's an underserved community, an underserved area of the community. You know, frankly, Campbell is, as you all know, is only six square miles. So it's you can hop in your car or ride your bike, and you'll be right by, you know, a commercial space almost immediately. So I I don't know that that term really applies there. That's why I would favor more the permissive ability rather than requiring that certain things that go in there be be mandated in terms of commercial space. I looked on page 191 of the actual, this is packet page 191, which is the actual, see, you know, is it? No, I think it, I'm sorry, maybe there's two numbering systems here. It may be the document itself. Anyway, it talks about adjustments. But the only definitions I really are the only concepts I really found in adjustments had to do with setbacks. So there there were no other types of adjustments. I thought this was the section where there might be ways in which permission can be given for slight variations and things of that nature. So these are kind of my concerns. Obviously, we we want to promote affordability. We want to promote good standards. And but I I just worry about zones and subzones and just all this level of detail. I wonder how necessary it is. And so that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Landry.
No, Elliot. No comment? Sorry, I may jump around a little. First off, a lot of the graphics in here don't reflect the standards that are written. And I'll specifically talk about the ones where you have a straight black line section next to the map. I can't find a page offhand what page to have you direct to, but you have a little color graphic, and then you have a a map, and then you have a little elevation, and it basically everything goes straight. And there's no step backs, and it looks like what we're not trying to achieve. And to that same extent, the title cover of the book. Well, hang on, help me. Sorry, here I'm trying to. What am I looking at outline? Oh, my God, I'm sorry. I'm finding the wrong page here. Hold on a second. Sorry. Okay, I can't find it, but on the cover of the report, the attachment. Yeah, all of these are all, everything's all straight lines.
Is that what you were referring to, Councilwoman Landry? I just want to make sure we understand your comment. Is this what you were referring to?
No, I'm trying to, I thought I highlighted it. Sorry, here, where is? There's a map, and then there's like a pencil line, just black lines, and it shows elevations, everything's straight lines. And when I look at the example, and I was reading the report, that one page on the slide that you showed where you had the block building on one side and Crestley on the other side. It's one of your slides in here. When I'm reading the port, I didn't say I didn't get that that's a no picture, and this is a yes picture. So it wasn't clear at all to me. Okay, now let me see if I can go back to my notes here. Okay, so the cover of the report, I forget what page it starts on. Down in the bottom corner is the same thing. It's a straight wall going up, no variation, no, you know. So basically, the examples are not necessarily reflecting the description with these step backs and these things next to housing and how it goes down. The pictures to me don't match with that. Yes, we want a variety of architectural styles. Okay. The I'm I'm sorry, I'm going to jump around a little bit. The Pruneyard comments had to do with the parking and the 30 foot setback. I don't know why we need that everywhere. And that that is limiting, and I think it may be better to look at kind of what's the width of a parking space? What's the width of an access aisle? What's the width of the next parking space? You know, if it's 16, 25, 16, or 18, 20, whatever that is, that if you give that dimension, you can get two banks of parking and a drive aisle. And then if you look at the building footprint, you may not be able to get the 30 foot setback. The, yeah, it's 30 feet. So that number to me is it seems a little vague. And then what are the variations? And I think especially what Sarah was saying, her long linear lot. Not only does the step back of the relationship next to it be affected, but the 30 foot setback for parking. So maybe a little more clarification of when that applies and when it does not apply. The Pruneyard letter also mentioned about the floor to floor ratio and how the talks about a 15 foot height in the parking garage where typically for residential floor to ceiling is 12 feet or eight foot minimum. But typically, floor to floor is 12 feet. And so I don't know why we need to have the parking on the first floor at 15 feet. Also, Valley Oak made the comment about eight spaces in the setback. And I think that goes to my comment about this 30 foot setback is maybe not everywhere gets exemption on the 30 feet, but that there is some provision to allow some a little closer. And again, I would go to what's the dimension of two parking rows and a drive aisle? That may help set it. The images knows versus yes, as I'm reading the report, it wasn't clear. I'm looking at the picture going, no, we don't want that. And then you have to read the text to say no. The dedication of park when Councilmember Scazola, am I pronouncing it right? Mentioned about what private owned, publicly owned land, who maintains it? Brian was shaking his head yes to the city. We don't have to maintain it. There's a lot of development in San Jose where it's public park with public access, but the development has to maintain it. And so that's some of the things that we could do to get more publicly accessible open space and really clarify civic space versus public space versus an open space. And I agree with Councilmember Fertado that, to me, civic space sounds like it's a government owned paved area. You know, I'm like, don't use the word urban, redefine what that means as civic. There's a big chart in here on page seven of the packet. There's like 20 abbreviations on here. I can't find anywhere what those mean. That I looked under definitions, the title doesn't have the abbreviation next to it. I couldn't, it doesn't tell me what page to go to to find that. What are all those abbreviations stand for? I have no idea, and I couldn't find it anywhere in the report. I got, and it doesn't say abbreviations like normally upfront in the report. There's a page abbreviations right there up front, and then go see definitions if you want to have it down lower. So that was very confusing to figure out that chart. Okay, we talked about the 30 feet. Yeah, so on page 10 of the packet, example of Main Street and supporting services. I don't think we want a building that looks like that on page 10. But I wasn't clear, are you giving me a bad example or a good example? And all of the graphics, I would say, are the same thing. The thoroughfares, it's on page 14. There's six categories at the top. And this whole circulation network that we had talked about before about having to add these vehicle thoroughfares. I thought at the last council meeting, we had talked about whether, because the developers were saying that reduces the number of units if you have to have a street and bake these up into blocks. And I thought that we had discussed that that takeaway, that is a mandatory requirement because it does take away from developable space. And then that goes into this whole thing of how many driveways and curb cuts? And is it a curb cut on a public street, whether a thoroughfare, an avenue, a street? Or is it internal inside the development? And that's what Councilmember Lopez was talking about is where is the driveway opening? Where's the street curb cut and internally within a development? Maybe having the front door and the garage door on the same face, which you used as a bad example, may be good internally within the development. Because I went to one of the developments over there, and I couldn't find the front door. I went down the corridor where all the garages were, and I'm like, where's the front door? And I had to go all the way around and back. So things like that. Compatibility graphics, form based. This has not been mentioned at all, except for a long time ago by me. But we had a ballot measure that said no buildings over 75 feet. And we have discussed that pretty, use that quite often. But I had made the comment at the Pruneyard all the way over to Santa Southwest Expressway in Bascom. Why can't we go taller? And I've heard nothing about coming back or going to the vote or doing something that in a certain area that you could go taller than 75 feet. I mean, I look at the Pruneyard, what's that 15 stories, the tallest tower? And at Southwest Expressway in Bascom, at the old Dix Plaza, they're putting in 115 foot tall tower for how Google, Google Housing. Anywhere in between, from my perspective, go tall, get more housing, you know, help the developer with the going up. But there is, I have not heard any discussion of, other than the density bonus may allow us to go over 75. So I think there's that area of town where we could be, and I don't know if that has to go to the ballot measure because this was voted on. The park dedication compatibility and that, I'm sorry, that goes back to who owns it, who maintains it, the liability and the insurance. What I find interesting in all your examples, you're not using some really good examples that we have in Campbell. And the one example I would use is the one on Bascom across from Whole Foods next to Jack and it's pretty sad when you have to identify things by the fast food restaurant. But the one apartment by Jack and the Box across from Whole Foods, I forget the name of that complex. I really like that. I think that says Campbell. It gives you variety, variation, ins and outs of the front of the building, ups and downs on the top of the building. You look at it, you drive by, and to me, it's very appealing. And we don't use that anywhere. We don't use Merrill Gardens as an example of any of these graphics. I think that one's another great example with the housing behind and the senior project. And really, the variation of architecture is what a lot of these standards are talking about. So I would like to see better examples of what we are doing already. Sorry, here. Trying to read quickly here. Okay, we talked about that. We talked about the floor to floor. Tree removal. Can't remember. Okay, there was a discussion in here of allowing them to forego some of our requirement in the tree removal standards. And I remember one project came forward over on Campbell or Hamilton Avenue, and they had this gigantic redwood. And I remember one project came forward over on Campbell or Hamilton Avenue, and they had this gigantic redwood tree that we wanted to save. And it was two feet to the parking curb, and it was cutting in the roots and everything. And nowhere in that was this thing where you can reduce the front setback from fifteen feet to twelve feet to move the building forward to save the tree. And so some of these standards, when you start talking about we have gigantic sycamores or redwood trees or oak trees, well, yeah, it's in my way, because you have these other setbacks somewhere. So well, let's get rid of some of the other setbacks to then allow you to save the trees. We want to preserve our urban canopy. And I'm looking forward to the meeting with the developers next week, but there's no comment about more community meetings after that? Are we gonna hold more community meetings? Are we coming back to council right after the developer meeting?
We do, it's a very tight schedule. And so ninety-eight percent of the comments we've gotten so far have just been from developers, so we are gauging pretty much exclusively with those stakeholders. If there are members of the community who'd like to reach out to us and use that time also, we can.
Okay, maybe another public outreach to community by via email or something to ask for comments. And then my last comment is about this two-and-a-half stories. That's very confusing, what that means, this two-and-a-half. To me, it meant, oh, a high roof, like I have a seventeen-foot ceiling in my ADU. So that's what I was thinking the half-story meant, is that you could have a high-pitched roof. So to find out, no, it actually means you can have a whole floor up there. And to me, two-and-a-half stories doesn't really make sense. It's not half a height of a story. It's the half of the depth or something that, what you came up with. And personally, I don't think that one actually looks that attractive. It's so stuck in the middle, almost looks like a chimney on top. So overall, a lot of work. You guys have been doing this for a long time. We're moving forward. That is great. We want housing. We want it affordable. Oh, I know my last comment, sorry. The tandem parking. And then you talk about bicycle space, reducing the parking count, and then maybe my motorcycles. But there's other alternative future transportation that's going to be happening. And we talk about the last mile and what that actually looks like, and where do scooters fit in? Where do other things that may be the future technology with cars and mobility devices? And so I don't see the future thinking in the whole thing of what is a car parking space, what is a motorcycle, what's a scooter? What's a bicycle? And where all those are stored? And then definitely I support tandem spaces. I've seen some projects that over in, by Dylan, that internally in there, they have the tandem underneath the building, and that seems to work well. And nowhere is there a discussion of a shared opening to a driveway, and then splitting and coming in one curb cut, and then splitting off and having multiple units accessible. So, thank you.
Councilmember Scazola?
Yeah, I just wanted to add on to one comment that Vice Mayor Landry mentioned about the seventy-five-foot limit. So before I was on council, I specifically wrote an email about this specific thing. And so I'm still supportive of possibly, I do believe it would have to go to the ballot, because the voters voted that height restriction in, in the first place, about fifty years ago or so. So I would be supportive, you know, if there is interest there of perhaps putting that on the ballot. And certainly, I know this is kind of getting into details, but we can talk about this later. But my, my point is, I still don't want looming buildings over already pre-existing neighborhoods. Nobody wants that, that I know of. But I think there are definitely a few sweet spots in our city where we could definitely have much taller buildings, and that would of course give us a lot more housing. And so I just wanted to add on and make that comment. Perhaps we should look into possibly some kind of ballot measure to remove that in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have a few comments, and I want to, they're just more general. I want to thank staff for the presentation and trying to break it down. It is very technical and complicated. I do support and want to encourage the walkable areas that the council previously provided direction on. I want to see what can be done with the open space on, however you want to define it, public space, open space, on where feasible on the large sites. I know we have an example of a park on Llewellyn in a development that's quasi-public space, or public parking, or public open space. So we do have an example in the city of where that exists, so maybe we should look into that and go from there. I'd like to see a little bit better description of the T-three, the T-four, the T-five, so that it's a little more user-friendly, and someone can better understand it. I think we need to also look to the missing middle area, so that we have projects and standards that encourage that type of development. On the architectural style, I'm a little confused, because some of the pictures in the packet look like a, you know, what, I'll give an example of the Penny Lane project, which, to me, doesn't have a lot of architectural style. And there's a picture in here of the Graylands building, which, in my view, is what we're trying to achieve, rather than a boxy building development. And it appeared that the Graylands, there was a sample of the Graylands development, and I'm not sure if that was supporting that type of style or discouraging that type of style. So I would like to see a little more variety and something more similar to the Crestley development. Yeah, is that, was that?
Just clarifying, Mayor Byber, you're speaking to the Crestley project?
Yeah, the Crestley project, you had a picture in there of what is a nice architectural style. So to me, that we should be going towards those type of standards rather than a boxy building. Let's see. I do think there needs to be a balance between prescriptive and flex, and providing flexibility in what we finally end up with. I really encourage the further discussion with the developers in trying to come up with reasonable standards that everybody can live with, and so that we can encourage development and not discourage it, and move forward with some of our housing needs. I like the ability that we're able to review and evaluate once we have some experience in the, once we adopt the standards. And I think that's the bulk of my comments. So thank you very much. And I just want to make sure that there are no other comments on this portion, so then we'll move on to the Vice Mayor Landry?
Yeah, I found the pages I was looking for. The graphics on page thirty, or page sixty-one of the packet, page thirty-one of the report, everything's just straight, vertical buildings. And as you look at the graphics, as you slide down page thirty-five of the report and sixty-five of the packet, same kind of thing. Just to me, they're not reflecting then what's down below, which shows step backs and, so, okay.
Thank you. So I'll now turn it back to staff for the code updates and the general plan refinements. We're almost on schedule.
All right. So I know it's a, it's perhaps a less exciting portion of the tonight's item, but every bit is much important. As we, to implement all these standards, we need to do a number of refinements to the code. We also are looking at a number of refinements to code to implement both the general plan and the housing element. The first of these is our, we're considering creating, creation of an opt-out process. So within the standards themselves, we've remarked earlier that there is a section, a chapter dedicated to adjustments to standards, so there is going to be provisions within the multifamily development design standards that provides for that situation where you have a tree, and you need to adjust, say, a setback in order to retain that tree. That would be one mechanism by which a development center may be deviated. Developers may also pursue a density bonus, where they could avail themselves of concessions and waivers to make adjustments to some of the standards we've been talking about tonight. But for a developer wants to completely, we're calling it opt-out, because they want to completely avail themselves of a completely discretionary legislative process by which they would be appealing to the council, saying, I think I've got something really special here, I've got a very unique site, something unusual is going on, and I want to present my own set of development standards, my own process by which I would develop the site. They may certainly, they could do so through this process. The first step of which would be to go to the city council for a pre-application. Where the council would be considering key elements of the project that would generally be related to it, providing either a community benefit or a superior design outcome that then would otherwise be possible under the standards in development. As a basic screening threshold, we'd be reserving this process for projects with at least fifty units, so that it's not being misused and abused like are historically, our plant development zoning district had, where you have a smaller project, three, four, or five units, trying to propose their own zoning or own development standards for a site. So that's the general idea. And again, as examples of projects which would provide community benefit, you might be providing greater affordability, greater number of affordable units, or a deeper level of affordability. It could provide for special housing needs, like veteran housing, or, you know, special needs housing. It might also provide a fiscal benefit to the city, like, who knows, maybe it's an innovative Costco design, but that Costco building can't meet the design standards, because it has a certain corporate aesthetic that doesn't modulate itself the way it's supposed to. And then finally, again, you might come up with a totally innovative design approach. In addition, additionally, so it's part of the chapter that we're establishing, we're recognizing the need for distinct permit types for housing development projects, which will be subject to the standards. So we're asking for the right types of application materials, or collecting the right fees associated with the the level of complexity associated with them. We've broken these up into three categories. The first is a staff-level decision, so it's called an administrative housing development permit. It would pertain to projects that are less than five, that result in less than five new residential units. So that'd be the limit at which the director could approve a project. It also would facilitate minor alterations to previously approved projects. The next category up is a planning commission action, it would really cover everything from five units and above. And the last category would be those items which you go to the city council, which are sites which would be subject to the large site standards, so those would be the five-acre sites, it'd be the Fize Electronics, it'd be the, the Santa Moss plazas of the world, where they're going through a broader update process. They're needing to have those considerations of the civic space provided on site. The layout and arrangement of those properties would be subject to council, as well as any project, as previously mentioned, that are subject to an overlay or combining overlay district, like if you're going through an opt-out process, or if they're already subject to overlay, like the Pruneyard is at this time. Additionally, there could updates, we're looking to retire the PD and CPD, these are the plant development and condominium plant development zoning districts. They would be reclassified as legacy zoning districts and permit types. As a result of that change, you would no longer be, it would no longer be possible to rezone a property to PD, but properties which already have a PD zoning designation would remain as such, with a limited exception of those sites which are housing opportunity sites. Those would be rezoned as part of the general plan and housing element update process. In terms of permit procedures, what that means is that those sites would be treated effectively the same as any other property in the city. They'd go through a site and architectural review process, or conditional use permit as appropriate, depending on their associated land use designation. And then the last slide that we have here, so we talked a little bit about code updates, so we want to show you the highlights. We also have identified a number of final refinements to the general plan. The first is in response to a letter that we received from the owners of fifteen oh one West Campbell Avenue. This is the Kellymore Paint Site, located just adjacent to the Santa Moss Plaza Shopping Center. So the plaza itself was designated as a housing opportunity site. They didn't have ownership interest at the time for the Kellymore to be included as part of the housing element update process. But certainly now that they've expressed an interest, we are considering expanding to include that site and to have a matching land use designation as the plaza, as kind of a corner site there. And then as initial cleanups, we'd identified a number of sites which have a residential land use designation, which happen to be public facilities or church sites in the city, primarily on Rincon Avenue in Sunnyside. And we're looking to just amend their land use designation to more closely mimic their existing land use. And those are here on the screen as well. And with that, I'm gonna stop for additional comments and questions.
Councilmember Fattato?
Yes, I do have a question. In the first element that you presented, where did you come up with the fifty units?
It's a, it's a screening threshold, there wasn't a particular number associated with, it wasn't a you can establish any number you'd like there.
Okay.
But fifty was, it seemed of a reasonable size that would be screening out smaller housing development projects, which we've seen come forward in the last decade or longer.
Well, I think you should give permission for something like twenty-five or plus. I mean, at twenty-five units is pretty good size, and fifty is quite a bit in a small city of our size. I don't know.
I would offer one clarity. We're also looking at the amount of staff time and cost that would be associated with preparing an overlay. And using, say, the Pruneyard Master Use Permit as a case study example, the cost, the administrative cost for staff to review and help facilitate the creation of effectively its own specific plan or precise plan for property was north of fifty thousand, sixty thousand dollars of staff time and cost. So generally, as a screening threshold, projects under fifty units probably wouldn't give it for the additional staff time and cost to facilitate a site-specific set of development of development standards.
I see. My other question is, you talked a little bit about different levels of approval for different things, and one was if someone brought something to the attention that would require the planning commission review, I would assume that no matter what the planning commission decided, something like that is still appealable to the city council.
Yeah.
I'll permit you could appeal.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Yeah, I mean, the advisory, all of our commissions do a great job, and they make decisions, and usually that's just fine. I just wanted to make sure that we retain the right to have someone appeal to us, and it cannot, you know, be stopped from doing that.
And I'd say, even the administrative decisions, you could appeal to the planning commission, and appeal to the planning commission's decision to the council. So those rights, those rights remain.
Councilmember Lopez?
Thank you. I just have a broader conceptual question. Obviously, the objective standards have to be objective, and that's, you know, as a result of new state law. So for this outside process, can you just help me understand, so I have clarity? Is this a subjective process if people choose to opt out of the objective design process?
It entirely would be. And the reason why we're able to facilitate that is it's a legislative act. So the, it's the equivalent of requesting a zoning map amendment on the property.
All right, thank you. Helpful.
Vice Mayor Landry?
Darn it, now I forgot my question. Oh, crap. Oh, you said that all decisions are appealable? I thought there was a level that it only goes to the planning commission.
I'll look for Stephen to clarify. Our intention with this is, all the actions you saw on the screen, you could appeal up to the city council.
But aren't there some projects that are only a planning commission approval?
Only ones are subject to a ministerial review process, which are effectively zoning clearance. Those are technically subject to an appealed process. But all of the ones that we're talking about tonight, like these housing development permits, like the admin, PC, and council level, those would all be appealable to the council, as indicated by director.
Okay, and then the Pruneyard has a PD, isn't that correct? No, what is, they have a master use permit.
They have a master use permit, and they're also within an overlay district. So they actually have their own overlay already assigned with its own master use permit associated with that overlay.
And we added housing to that? I know that when they came in originally, there was no housing.
Not to the existing permits, no, but as part of the housing element update process, we did identify it as a housing opportunity site, which could then facilitate housing development activity.
And then would they have to update their P, their P, master use permit, M U P?
Yes, which is, there is consideration for that, absolutely. But I would say that the only standards which would apply for the development of the project would be the new ones which we're talking about. But the reason why we're elevating at the council level is so that we could do whatever administrative cleanup, so we'd need to recognize that.
And they have come forward with the housing on what used to be the office building on Campbell. Have they come forward yet with those drawings?
They haven't had a formal application, so there have been plans circulated showing what a conceptual layout of that property would be.
And how many stories? And how many stories?
I, I couldn't speak to the specifics of it.
Okay, never mind. All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Scazola? Okay, I have no questions. So is there any further comment to, direction to staff? Councilmember Lopez?
Yeah, my only comment is I'm fully supportive of what, what's proposed here. Thank you.
Yes, I am too.
And Councilmember Ficata, you had a question about the fifty, um, units. Did you want to? Are, are you okay with that?
Uh, the, uh, the point about the cost, uh, is something I appreciate your comment on. I, I didn't realize it would cost that much money, but, um, so I understand that, yeah. And, and finally, I do support the comment of allowing another community meeting, um, because I, I do agree with the audience sometimes that speaking, uh, on a complex subject in two minutes is very difficult to do. So a community meeting where they can speak longer, I think, is, is warranted.
And will there, will there be flexibility, um, with the, um, if, if we were to approve the, the recommendation on the fifty, fifty units, um, coming to council, is there future ability to change that? If we find that there's, that it's better for, um, council to be reviewing projects that are, there's, that are smaller than that?
I'll start on, on the
Did I, I, did I ask the question?
I think so, yeah. Was it the, because there was two parts. One was the opt-out, where they would have to come to council and the threshold was fifty, uh, any point in the future, if council thinks, hey, that's too high of a bar, too low of a bar, we could, we could change that. On the permitting structure we had, uh, you, council could change that too as we go forward. And I think our broad intention here is we're doing usually what's, uh, you're seeing is a two to three year, your work effort in a six month period. So we know day one, after this is adopted, we probably will start building a list of amendments. And I see us coming back to you in six months to say, here's what we've learned immediately and hear from you. And then we'll, we'll constantly probably do a tinkering to the ordinance, so at least over the next two years after adoption.
Okay, thank you.
The, the only thing I was going to add is this process, the op, the community benefit overlay process is entirely discretionary for the council. There's no need to necessarily establish it, and certainly you could even rescind it or get eliminated in the future if you wanted to. So certainly the fifty unit threshold would be completely adjustable at, 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 at your discretion.
Okay, thank you. And then that brings us to the project schedule. Or did you already cover that?
No, we just, we want to indicate, um, in, in addition to the, uh, we, we will be having the, the additional stakeholder meeting, uh, later this month, and we'll be getting out advertisements for that. We'll, we'll be minimally, I, I believe, inviting members of the public to engage with us further and provide us feedback and correspondence um, on our update process, encouraging them to continue to engage with us and provide us feedback. Because in terms of our, our structured meeting dates, we do have a, uh, planning commission meeting scheduled for March sixteenth, where hopefully by that point in time, we'll have our second and refined and final version of the multi-fa- these standards under development as well as our tweaked, uh, map and all the code updates. And we'll be going to planning commission for recommendation and adoption, or recommendation for adoption. And that will be not only the, 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 the standards, but also the housing element and the general plan and all of the associated code updates. So it's going to be a big meeting. So stay tuned. And then subsequently, uh, you get, you're up next. Because in late March, we're looking for city council adoption, um, of these standards with the general plan and housing element as well. And, uh, that brings us to the, the, the presentation for tonight.
Vice Mayor Landry?
Question about the schedule. Have we gotten our feedback from HCD after our last vote?
We submitted the document to them today.
Okay.
Uh, and, uh, we have none. Yeah, the schedule was that they would give us a letter by this Friday, uh, responding. Our, of course, fingers are crossed that the city has responded to their comments. And with that, they are ready to tell us they can certify the document, but that, that's where we're at.
So they will be certified before our council meeting to certify the housing element?
It's kind of a tit for tat. The letter ideally would say we've reviewed or revised housing element. W- we are able to certify this. The city has to adopt the housing element first and send it back to them. So, so that would be the letter we would adopt in March. Um, and then we would send the housing element to them, basically the same housing element, and they would certify the document.
Okay, and, um, so we're, that's due potentially this Friday.
This Friday, yes.
Great, great. Thank you.
Any final comments? And staff, you have enough information to move forward with direction?
We should do, and I'll confirm, we, there's space. We can squeeze in a, a community meeting. Uh, just let folks know where we're at in the process and update them and take any additional comment.
Great, thank you. And with that, I'll adjourn the meeting.